This meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on June 11, 2015, to the Harlem News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in the City Hall, 78 Bayard Street, New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Fowler. Mr. Hush. Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Morello. Mr. Caldwell. Mrs. Seawood.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mr. General. Flags, please.
Ready salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the citizens of this country, stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder, the next monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 21, 2016, beginning at 7:00 PM at New Brunswick High School auditorium. We need to approve the minutes of April 19, Board meeting. Could I have a motion?
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
On.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Morello. Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you. The Superintendent's report.
Good evening. For the month of May, there were 104 suspensions. There were nine cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our student enrollment is at 10,136, student attendance at 95%, and staff attendance at 95%. I would also like to just take a moment to say a few words. It's very important to understand that the forward movement of any district is a reflection of the partnership between the Superintendent and the Board. Our Board has been privileged to have the leadership of our outgoing President, Ms. Pat Sadowski. Although she's not leaving the Board, her term as President has expired, has expired, and on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you, Ms. Sadowski, for your passion, commitment, and belief in our students, and also believing that they are our greatest worth, time, and treasure. We appreciate you, and we are glad that you will remain the Board. Thank you so much.
I'll read the flag. It says, "The New Brunswick Board of Education recognizes Mrs. Patricia Sadowski for serving as Board President, for your commitment and dedication to the children in New Brunswick Public Schools." Thank you very much.
You didn't have to do this. This isn't the reason that I do these things, and I kind of felt like Michael Corleone in Godfather III. I thought I was out, and they sucked me back in. Mr. Spencer and Mrs. Seawood know where my heart is and how I feel about the students of New Brunswick. I already told you that I bleed blue and white, and you know that that's not good in my profession to see blue blood. I enjoyed my time as being President, but I'm really glad that I'm not anymore. It was my second full-time job. And when I started this, my son was, I think, a junior in high school, and my daughter was in 7th grade at Woodrow Wilson. And I always felt kind of whatever I thought was good for them was good for the rest of the students in New Brunswick. And you know my loyalties to New Brunswick again, to the school, especially New Brunswick High School. So I always take offense when anybody criticizes New Brunswick High School, and I will continue to do that. It's kind of overwhelming, and there are a lot of people who have helped me along the way. My family, who really puts up with my absences, and this very special guy that I'm married to, who supports me in every way that we can, and I'm so lucky that I have him. My children, who said to me, "No, no, no, don't do this again, but if you really want to, we'll support you in any way." And to my mother and father, who raised my brothers and I to treat everybody the same way that I like to be treated. And I hope that I continue to live up to everything that my mother and father taught me. And I just thank all of you. And I know I didn't get a chance to say thank you to the principals and the directors and the supervisors, and especially the big heroes, the classroom teachers, for all their support while I was President for the last two years. I got a lot of nice emails, and I really appreciate everything that you do. Best of luck to Mrs. Seawood, and she knows that, as Mr. Spencer always says, "I've got your back." So thank you, everybody, and this is just overwhelming. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
We need a motion to accept the Superintendent's report. Second.
Second.
Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Morello. Mr. Caldwell.
I'm standing.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. General. Student Representative for Board, Nancy Santos.
Good evening. Last week, AP testing was a huge success for both seniors and juniors. I wish the best for the next two upcoming weeks. On April 29, the new peer leader for the upcoming school year were inducted. This past Saturday, the Athletic Hall of Fame inducted 10 more outstanding alumni into its rankings. At the same event, fellow seniors Tiara Howard and Tajira Montgomery were awarded with the New Brunswick Hall of Fame Scholarship. May 27, the senior prom is scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. The Facilities Committee report. Mr. Edward Spencer.
Madam President, the Facility Committee did not meet this month, but we'll have updates in the following month.
Thank you. Policy Committee report, please.
The Policy Committee met, I believe, May 3. We have 12 policies and regulations that we discussed, and I make a motion that we accept them on first reading.
Second.
Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Morello.
Yeah.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Did Mr. Hush lead? Mrs. Sadowski will report the Athletic Committee.
Athletic Committee met earlier this afternoon. We went and met with Mr. Lowry, our Athletic Director. Our long jumpers were first in the county, and our 4x1 relay team was second in the county. On June 18, Jonathan Cassius will have his annual camp, and it will be held at Memorial Stadium this year. There's going to be some motivational speakers, and that usually is a really great day, so we look forward to that. Our tennis team was 10 wins, 7 losses. They're hosting the first round of the state tournament. I think Mr. Lowry said that's tomorrow. The baseball field will be hosting a first-round playoff game, and it's been several years since we have hosted any state tournament games, so we're very excited about that. The outcome of a large amount of students took part in all of our spring sports, especially in the middle school, and we're looking forward to that trend to continue. And I need a motion to accept the bank reconciliation.
Some motion. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Morello. Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The Curriculum Committee report.
Yes, the Curriculum Committee met last week. We just had a few resolutions to approve, and they're part of the resolution package. No recitation forgiven, so I need someone to make motion to accept the... Well, there's nothing to really be done, because resolutions will be put around during the resolution package. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Sadowski will report on public relations for Mrs. Fowler.
Okay, the one thing that's most important for public relations that tomorrow, May 11, 2016, is National School Nurses Day. Congratulations to all our school nurses on everything you do every day for our students. I would really be in trouble if I didn't promote that. One of the other things that I happened to read yesterday was in the Rutgers Targum, and some of the Rutgers students that are involved in music theory, and especially with string instruments, have been coming up to New Brunswick High School and helping our students in the orchestras, especially with the string instruments. So it's been a really good partnership. The Rutgers students enjoy it. Some of those students are also majoring in music education, and our students are getting the benefit of help from some pretty good musicians. So that's really all I have to report on public relations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission? Didn't it change its name?
It changed, I was going to say. But we can... The name change is official as of July 1. You'll see that.
Though we're still using stationery in the website, so you can actually change it.
Oh, we can change it.
Yeah, you can actually change it. So you're setting up stuff with the...
Okay, great.
And the new name is?
The Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. And for those, I'm the New Brunswick representative, and so for those that don't know, the ESC-NJ is the largest special needs school district, working with students who are multiply disabled, students with autism, students with emotional challenges. And each district in Middlesex County, and now we have four additional throughout the state, has a representative, and so I've been the representative, and I'm the Board Chair for the last 14 years of the organization. And we're... One of the things that the ESC-NJ, and actually, New Brunswick is one of the largest utilizers of the ESC-NJ services, but one of the accomplishments of the organization is that it built the first lead platinum certified school. And it was actually rated the 18th greenest school in the country. It's called the Center for Lifelong Learning in Sevierville, and is the only school for special needs students, autistic students. And since our last Board meeting, Senator Kane, who is one of the legislative leaders, came to visit the school with much fanfare to really see this as a model of environmentally friendly special needs education. So that was a great accomplishment. And with the name change, you're going to hear more and more from the organization. So that's my word.
At this time during the President's report, I have asked our Facilities Director, Frank Ladocci, to report out on the water testing. So at this time, would you come?
In light of recent attention drawn to water quality in our school testing, the district has felt they needed to be proactive in this matter and implement water testing in this year. So what I wanted to do today was just go through what we've done up to this date and then tell you what some of the next steps are as far as what we've done as far as water testing. As far as the guidelines that are out there as far as water testing, right now, there's no requirement for schools to test their water. There is legislation in place from the EPA which regulates drinking water in providers such as an MUA or a city water department. There is nothing right now that requires schools to test for water. There is guidelines out there, and the EPA has some guidelines. There's other guidelines that are out there. So we primarily follow the three Ts for testing through an EPA guideline related to schools. And with that, it's important to note that the EPA guidelines use 20 parts per billion as the acceptable limit. But New Jersey Drinking Water Standards has more stringent, 15 parts per billion, and that's what we use when we did our testing as our criteria. That didn't work. Okay. So what we did was, April 14 to the 19, we implemented first draw testing, which is outlined in the EPA guidelines, and the samples were taken by Blue Corporation, which we contracted to help us with the testing. On May 2, we received the results, and we had 14 issues identified, drinking fountains or drinking locations identified with levels above the acceptable limit of the 15 parts per billion. So those drinking fountains were taken out of service immediately. I believe we received a report at 7 o'clock on that Monday morning. By 8 o'clock, I had a call back from all the custodians and maintenance staff that the drinking fountains affected had been taken out of service. We also coordinated with Food Service to provide drinking water or bottled water at those locations as needed. And as needed meant that in no location or no school did we have a case where we shut off all the water or all the drinking fountains. So it was spot locations throughout the district, throughout some of the schools. So the drinking water is provided as students need. Principals were aware of that, and they can access that if necessary. But again, we do have drinking water in all the schools at this point. It's hard to see what we got up here. I guess on May 3, we also communicated through a correspondence to... I guess that was, yeah, May 3. We communicated correspondence to parents and students. I guess, sorry, that was the 4th. On May 3, we talked to the Board and communicated to them the urgent steps that we have taken based on the reports and explained to them what the next steps we would be doing. And on the 4th, we put correspondence out to students and to parents, to staff, explaining what we have just done. We also posted the test results in the report on our website, and we also provided the test results to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for their records. Next step that we did, and that's again following the EPA guidelines, was we scheduled second draw tests. Second draw test is a different type of test than we did initially, and we tested those at the 14 locations. And what that test will help us do when we get the results back, we completed those results Friday of last week. We're expecting them in the next two weeks. What those results will help us do is identify whether the issue is with the drinking fountain itself, or the sink, or whether it's something that's related to the piping that supplies that drinking fountain. So at that point... My next step. I'm coming down so I can see what we got going on. Take the mic. So the samples were collected in 181 locations throughout the district. Okay. Of those 181 locations, 14 came back with results above the acceptable level of 15 parts per billion. These were all taken from the report, and that is posted on our website if we wanted to see that. This chart taken of the report shows what the action steps were recommended by the report, and we complied with this. We took the drinking fountains and sinks out of service immediately, and we scheduled the second draw test, which, as I mentioned, we did that Friday of last week, and we're expecting the results back soon. As far as next steps, we need to get the results back from the second draw test. Need to analyze the results. As I mentioned before, the second draw test in combination with the first draw test will help us identify whether the issue is with the drinking fountain or sink, or whether it's related to pipes deeper within the building. Once we figure out what we expect the issue is, we're going to remediate the drinking fountain locations, which really means replace. And we'll identify what was needed, whether it's just a replacement of a fountain or a sink, or whether it takes a little bit further action to thing into the pipes. And additionally, what the Board has felt that they need to do is, as I mentioned before, 15 parts per billion is the acceptable limit. But we did have a couple locations where it was a little higher and approaching the 15, though per New Jersey recommendations, we are officially okay, feeling we want to be a little proactive, a little more aggressive, and we're going to remediate additional fountains as well that were higher than what we would want to see. And then last, what we're planning to do is to implement a water quality testing program. We'll review, I guess, right now, this proposed legislation in place that would require districts to test. We'll look at that, try to stay consistent with that, as well as add our own needs in there, and develop an implementation plan moving forward so that we'll be able to stay on top of this as we move forward. And that's where we are today. I think we will take questions from the public later during the public session. And that concludes where we are today.
We want to commend Mr. Ladocci and the administration for their prompt response to our inquiries regarding the water testing program and quality of the water in the school system. We have taken a proactive approach, and before the state passed the law, made the recommendations, as soon as the Board had knowledge of other areas of the country affected by this water crisis, which actually is a result of the aging infrastructure in our country in many cases. So we commend them for their prompt response. Now I'll take questions from the public. A reminder, please sign in. Limit your questions to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Lort. And I have one question about the report we just saw. I couldn't see, but it looked like one of the 11 was way, way over 100 per billion. Is that correct?
Yes, the report is also on our website. If you want to refer to it.
Well, I had seen the part where 14 locations were listed, but I'm now confused which one of the locations was the one that was... So I think 167, I believe? Or 159? I couldn't see it that well. Did you see the?
There was, one was 187.
187?
That was in a hall drinking fountain at McKinley.
It almost seems like the kids that were habitually drinking out of that fountain every day should be tested for elevated levels, because that's really, really...
I'm no scientist, but I think that's why, as a follow-up, the next step is to take secondary testing, and you compare the two and determine exactly where it's coming from, and that way you have a better idea.
As far as the remediation, but in terms of the children that may be, that's right outside of their classroom, and they were drinking several times a day. I know in the future, I have heard that children are drinking hot silver water several times a day, especially during the hot...
I understand.
It seems like those children should probably be tested for elevated levels in their blood.
Also, in terms of, I was trying to follow along in the earlier part of the meeting, and I even came early so that I could read through the consent items, but I got to one that just had a list of policies, and it says they would be approved on the first reading, but then they were never read. And are the policies listed in here somewhere? We haven't gotten to that section.
Well, it's a consent, it was a consent item.
So... Oh. I think we did, because it's a Resolution 8D. Consent Agenda is number 14.
Okay, so these haven't been read yet?
Correct.
Are these coming after? So will these policies, because I didn't find them in here, will they be read before they are approved?
No, they have been read by the committee, and it's the committee's recommendation that they be adopted on first reading because they're mandated policies.
Mandated from the state, I think?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so would they be available on the website to read?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. And also, I have a question about a bank reconciliation. And this question is from Mrs. Sadowski. Was that related to the Athletic Committee report, or is that a separate item entirely?
It's a part of the Athletic Committee report.
So what does that mean, a bank reconciliation? I don't know what that is, and I couldn't see an explanation here.
The athletic account has a separate bank account that we utilize to fund, to pay athletic officials and different athletic things. So the athletic section has its own bank account, which we reconcile and vote on and improve on a monthly basis.
Okay, so when you say you're voting on a bank reconciliation, you're just making the bank account balance, or?
Yes, it's like balancing your checkbook. So we're voting on the... So we're voting on the disbursements for the month, and that that bank reconciliation, our votes match with the bank accounts.
Okay, so is there a place to see that, good? Is that part of the budget? I'm trying to follow along here, but it's...
Yeah, that should be in the packet.
In the packet with the budget? Yes, or in the packet with the...
It's not in what the bills list, in the budget and the financial report.
No, it's in the agenda packet?
Yes, it should be. If it's not, I'll take a look and see.
Okay, I didn't see it, but I didn't know what I was looking for when I looked the first time, so thank you very much.
Oh, I, excuse me, I apologize. That, that bank reconciliation with the list of these checks and everything, in terms of reconcile the account, I don't believe is part of this packet. The Board of Education has it, but the public doesn't.
Ms. Teresa Viva. I'm the executive director of Lasts American Media. And I want to say I thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and be able to speak to you once more. But basically, you guys were like a company announcement of this meeting is in certain places. So I think we don't share most of the time. And a new suggestion, please, talk to Charlie. So you guys can work with him in terms of posting when these meetings are going to be, so family members will be, you know, knowledgeable of these meetings, and it is important. I also want to say in terms of the water, I think it's important to make not only the adequate follow-up in terms of the test on water, but it's immediate to getting asked for kids. Independently of if the water has been affected or not, the children needs to be tested for the positivity of the school, for the kids, for anyone in the community. It's important. And the second thing is that in the primary, we ask about HIV. I'm reading that we do a bit of propaganda. I would like to ask the superintendent to please call us, as we suggest, call and let us know who is part of this HIV, how we can be part of it, how many students are part of it. So we want to know, how it needs to know. And also find out how we can promote the HIV among our kids and family members.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Are you saying HIV as in victory?
You know, the harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
No problem. I think the other part also that concerns me is that in terms of the water, the last time that parents come here to be part of, or hear the budget meeting, they weren't able to attend because somebody at the door told them not to get in because it was only part of the board. And I think when you're talking about money and how the money has to distribute, I think it's important that the community, it's like, I also want to attend, of course. And they made them welcome. Don't make them wait outside. And they called me because I wasn't here, and they thought, well, we're not welcome to this meeting. And I think as you can see, these few people came here, and we came is mostly because somebody else let us know that this meeting was occurring, which is not happening from the school system. They should remind us that this meeting is okay. And also, again, superintendent, we met a few weeks ago, and you said that you want to work with the organizations. And we happy to work with you and the board to communicate to parents about meetings, et cetera, or how we can collaborate with you to make things better for the schools and students. But please, don't wait so much because I said meeting, we don't have another meeting again. And in that meeting, honestly, the perception of how well you want to work with the students and with family members are more than imposing, more than how we can talk and how the community is going to work together. So I just suggest, please, consider your approach to families, because right now we have a lot of attendance. It's not nothing on here putting on the place as well. And in the way that you talk to students today, which I hope you remember me, and you remember my student, and the way that you talk to students, this is not like encouraged participation, but it's encouraged participation. So I just suggest, please, to have a meeting, a follow-up meeting, with those that are willing not to just complain, but cooperate with you. Thank you.
Good evening, and first, I just want to ask, is there going to be public comment on the resolutions separate from this open public questions? Or is this the only time?
It's the only time.
Okay, so you're asking us to comment on all of your resolutions on, I guess, the 30 resolutions, plus everything else we heard about the water, and any other issue that we might want to talk about? You're asking us to just do it all in one separate voice? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. My name is Charles Cradwell. I'm a New Brunswick superintendent for New Brunswick Today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I hope and am confident that you will be able to leave with me five minutes, five minutes, because the topic of the conversation is so important. Lead affects children, it affects most vulnerable people in our population, and if it's in school, it's a serious problem. I want to know a little more about the timeline. So you say that the results were received May 2nd. Why are they dated April 29th?
How does water date?
April 29th was Friday, right?
Yep.
Friday night, I assume? I was talking with the testing agency, they were preparing them. I checked all weekend. They were, didn't know whether they get them to me Friday, or they get them to me on Monday. I checked all weekend, received them at 7 o'clock in the morning on that Monday following.
Thank you. And the testing was done 14 through 19 of April. Can you tell me what date was the Lou Corporation hiring to do the testing? Was it, you know, that same time period, or was it significantly before that?
It was that same time period, we jumped on it. I don't have those dates in front of us, we can get back to you with that. But again, it was, we tried to go as expeditious as possible in order to get the test results done.
Okay, so the board decided to do water testing in April, it's safe to say?
No. Excuse me? As soon as we were aware of problems in other areas of the country, we began talking about it. We didn't just up and decide to do any testing in April.
So when did the board begin talking about it? What month?
As soon as it hit the news. And before any other action was done. And it wasn't a formal decree. It was more a discussion that we needed to test our water.
Gotcha.
And if you want more information about the water testing and the results, I suggest you call and schedule an appointment.
I did try to do that today, actually, called Mr. Rodolce and he messaged. So I looked forward to having that meeting, as we discussed last week. I do have to say, though, it's been hard to get information about this situation. I've asked a number of questions of the superintendent, such as, you know, which schools are operating a lot of the water? How many bottles have been distributed? Had not gotten answers. I found a complaint filed with the Department of Water until they could say kids were getting sick, checked the water from March 2015. And I asked, you know, what actions were taken? And the administration says that they're not familiar with the complaint. It wasn't brought to their attention. Meanwhile, City Hall said otherwise. City Hall said the water until they spoke to the school administration. I just have a simple question, who is writing? These are all questions that happened to answer my question.
Well, none of that is in writing. I saw your email, I responded to it. Some citizen, their parent, we're not sure, used her first name only, said children are getting sick. And they went to the water department, and the water department note said test. And that's all we know. You come up with these verbal statements that somebody in the water department told to somebody in the school district? We have no knowledge of any written complaints, any negative tests conducted by the water department. So your question cannot be answered by this district.
I'd be happy to share the written statement from the mayor's office of the city in New Brunswick.
Fine, then do that.
Please respond to it. But I didn't get any response to my question.
Well, because we didn't know that. You're saying somebody in City Hall said they spoke to somebody in the district? I mean, that's gibberish.
Excuse me? You're calling the mayor's office and his spokesperson, what they said gibberish?
No, what you said is gibberish. You said that somebody in City Hall said that they spoke to somebody in the district about some water pass that we have no knowledge of. There's nothing in writing. The only thing provided was a handwritten note on water department stationery that said some...
That's in writing.
Okay. There's been nothing by you to say that the city administration wrote the board of ed a letter that there was some problem in our schools about water. We have no such document. If you do, share it with us, but we don't.
Okay. I think people are beginning to see my frustration, but I'll cut straight to the chase here. In 2005, the district did testing on all the schools. Am I correct when I say that was the last time it was testing on all the schools prior to this year?
I think there were two districts in the whole state that did that on a voluntary basis. We were one of them, funded by the EPA. We did the tests, and it's 11 years ago, Mr. Cradwell. But we, we did it, and the test showed, basically, we passed. There were a couple of areas of concern. One of them was Lincoln School was remediated, was retested, and the school was fine. We had been assured by the EPA, but again, not in writing, but that there were no adverse findings back 11 years ago that weren't remediated.
Understood. And I read the report. It's interesting, New Brunswick Today requested these results on March 19th. Our reporter, Daniel Munoz, before the proactive district decided to undertake this 2016 water testing. Is it true in the 2005, or 2005 results that the district was advised to consider resampling every three to five years to ensure proper drinking water quality? Is that one of the recommendations this board received?
Yeah. That recommendation was specific to Lincoln School. The school district retested that school in the year 2009. No taps were over 15 parts per billion. None. So we didn't feel it's necessary to test again since we had an issue. We tested it, we retested four years later, there was no issue.
Why was the recommendation specific only to the Lincoln School? Weren't there other schools that needed remediation in 2005?
The recommendation was specific to Lincoln School because in 2005, we had an air quality and water issue. Actually, we had an air quality issue. We went into the school, we tested for air quality, we tested for water. We found elevated levels of lead in the water. We shut off everything immediately and remediated those taps. We then decided that we should test all the schools, and which we did. And you have those results, similar results in terms of 20 something taps that were shut off and remediated. So Lincoln School was the most egregious school at that time. That report that you received through RK was specific to Lincoln School. We then went through the Department of EPA on a voluntary basis. It wasn't through a vendor or an expert. They gave us the results, we followed through from there. So that report is specific to Lincoln School due to we hired them just for Lincoln School.
Understood. And so if the recommendation was to resample every three to five years...
Is that valid?
Why did the district only do it once in 2005 and then never again until 2016?
I'll answer that. Once you test and you're remediator, we don't feel that it's necessary. Were there any taps in the Lincoln School test that came positive, right?
No.
So you see a problem, you solve it, and you're done. And you never need to retest again, because pipes don't need maintenance? Is that the board's position? Is that what the district thinks about how water systems work? That you don't need to retest every so often? I think I'm very clear in saying that I believe that this Board of Education has been more proactive than you give us credit for, and has taken care of this issue many, many years before the rest of the nation is just learning of it. And I think that we deserve credit for that proactiveness. And we tested in 2009, there was no lead in any of the water. We tested again in 2016, there's no lead in any water. And I think the board and administration should be credited for the fact that we took the necessary steps to ensure that there's no lead in the water at those schools. So I think it's...
Mr. Cradwell?
Yes?
Your time is up.
Madam President, I appeal to you, can I please have a...
Absolutely not.
Madam President, children may have been poisoned.
Mr. Cradwell?
You, the children deserve nothing less than full transparency. It's nice that you let Mr. Rodolce take the bullet.
No speeches?
But the kids deserve better than this excuse, this sorry excuse for...
You're out of water, sir. Certainly, you're out of water.
You shut down first. You would not...
You continue, you're removed from the meeting, you're out of water, stop.
I am serious, the district should have taken action sooner. And now, now the ball's in your court. Are you going to test the kids? Are you going to test...
Come on, you want to make a speech, you're a judge for a citizen.
Are you going to pay for testing so people who might have been poisoned can determine if...
We're so far ahead of this schedule, and so far ahead of any district in the state, your comments are nonsense. We've tested our water, we remediated in the past. If there's any issues, we're remediate going forward.
What will you do about them?
That's you're out of water. That's the end, please.
What will you do about them? Will you pay?
Sorry, you're going to be removed from the meeting. Do you want that to happen? You probably do.
Will you pay for the testing?
You're out of water, please.
This is a joke.
Hi, I have a question about the previous time at Lincoln School. Because I was working there at that time, and both of my kids were there. Did information go home to the parents? When those fountains? Because now, in talking to my daughter, I find out that the fountain that was closed, I can't exactly remember, because fountains are periodically closed in the schools for different reasons. Not just the lead, whatever they find, I don't know. But sometimes you find garbage bags of the fountains and you can't use them. But she specifically remembers the lead was the fountain right outside of the gym, and she was playing basketball. So she was drinking a lot of that water. And I would appreciate it knowing at that time that she had consumed so much water that was high in lead, so that I could then get her lead levels back.
It was so long ago that I haven't been there. We shut this school down and did the remediation. I'm quite sure there was notice, but it's 11 years ago. But that happened, and there was notice that there was a problem in the school with the drinking water. And we shut it off, the whole school. I mean, how do you not know there's a problem? Back then, you were a parent. I don't know what notice went out to parents, because it's 11 years ago. They may have gotten it.
I'm a parent of two different, of two children in two different grades, and I was working there.
And you didn't know anything about this? That they shut the school down and they shut the water off? That's hard to believe.
They shut the school down and sent us home? I don't remember that.
Excuse me?
They shut the school down, and what, we went home?
No, it was during the summer, but we shut it down and replaced all the pipes.
Okay, I would have liked to know, so, but we, see, I never found out that my daughter had drunk, and did the same thing now, with that one fountain that is so high. I feel like those parents, at the very least, the parents should be... I feel like those parents, at the very least, the parents should be informed so that if you're not going to see that the blood level gets tested, that the parents can see that their blood level gets tested for better. And I really think, because that's, it's so, so high at that fountain. You know, maybe the whole school doesn't think because, but maybe the children that drank a lot of that water from that fountain. That really adds up. And I just, I feel between this and the other incident with the water park, with the water park that was falsified before, I really feel kind of bad and all those years, thirty years that I worked for this school and, and I would tell the parents, no, don't send bottles of water, don't send bottles of water, we let them drink some of these fountains, and you might just say what?
Hello, uh, my name is Celia Reyes, I was the former governor of New Brunswick, currently a graduate student at the Lausanne School. As a youth in the community developing concentration, um, at, at the Lausanne School, I just wanted to pass along some advice in my opinion that maybe the board should consider going forward with the lead issue. Um, in particular, I understand that, of course, we should be, uh, of course, at the basic level, is the infrastructure issue and that's something that's out of the board's hands, but one thing in particular that I find more and more is that people are very unaware of infrastructure issues in our state and that these kinds of things do happen. Um, so perhaps a, an event or some kind of recurring program with our students, particularly our middle school and our high school students, to get them aware about infrastructure issues in New York City and how that impacts them to get them more involved in, in this kind of issue so that they can advocate as well as engage and educate other people, their family members as well. Um, I, and then secondly, uh, I know that Governor Christie has presented a bill so that lead testing can be done on the water sources on a periodic basis, I believe it was twice a year he put in funding for, um, for about ten million dollars. Um, if, if that is passed, that is wonderful, we have, and this district has funding sources to be able to do regular lead testing. But I was hopeful that, uh, given the severity of the issue, that the board also takes, continue, or continues to take a more proactive approach and be a model for other school districts and try to, and try to find the funding, to secure the funding so that regular testing can be done, so that we're not blindsided, um, by this issue. I understand that the testing was done in the past and that's something to commend, but for it to be the regularly until we can, as a state and as a country, um, start repairing our infrastructure so that we don't miss, we don't need to worry about this as such a constant looming issue for our kids and for our families and just for general public health. Uh, thank you for the time.
I want to ask every member of the board who's drinking a bottle of water tonight, why you made that choice? Is there a problem with the drinking water in this school? Do you want to inspire confidence in drinking water here? Would you have a bottle of drinking water here? That's my question. Can the board members who saw a bottle of water tonight explain to me why they made that choice? Is one of them willing to stick up for their own choices that they made? Leadership.
The Consent Agenda, Resolutions A through AF. Could I have a motion, please? Mr. General?
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell? Drew? Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. General. The Finance Committee report will be presented by Mrs. Patricia Sadaski.
The Finance Committee met earlier this evening and, um, I asked for a motion to accept the finance report.
So who?
Second.
Mr. General?
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadaski?
Uh, yes, but I have stayed on page six.
Mrs. Shukaitis?
Yes, um, I've stayed on page one.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. General. Resolution for closed session, where is the Open Public Meeting Act? N J S A ten, four through six, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in a closed session. And where is the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows? Personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now therefore, it be resolved that the fore-said subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff. In the minutes of said closed session, discussion will be made available to the public and the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. They have motion, please.
Come on. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shukaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
We are in closed session.